Welcome, everybody, to our Tuesday, November 12th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. May I please have a motion to call the meeting to order? So moved. Second, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My fault.
Alright, with that, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved, Linda, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, with that, we have our student liaisons. Come on up.
Yeah, absolutely. We're all waiting for it.
Dude, I suck. Go for it. You got it. Or do you want me to say it?
Oh, you're first. Oh, okay. Alright.
Ooh, I'm sorry. I'm in theater. I shouldn't do that. Um, hello, I'm sorry I wasn't here last meeting. I was out with walking pneumonia along with like everyone else. But I'm ready and I'm back for November and there's so much going on at Thomas. First off, some of our Titans in Barbershop received the Doing the Right Thing Award. Liam C., Bobby L., Jacob K., Colin R., Marcello and Mateo S. and Evan S. were recognized for giving a private performance to an elderly neighbor after her husband of 60 years passed away. And she really appreciated them and they're just, they're great. The Hoxsey Youth Symphony Orchestra, which is a very prestigious organization, took on Zachary S., Daniel R. and Molly S. and we're all really proud of these Titans to show off their musical talents in that very prestigious orchestra. And finally, to end the month, we have the performance of Diary of Anne Frank. And as the stage manager of this production, I can say that this is the most meaningful and impactful production we have ever put on Thomas's stage. It has an incredible group of students involved and we really hope that you guys can come see it. I'm actually going right back to rehearsal after this. And overall, Thomas has been full of students making positive impacts and changes lately. And I'm so thankful that I can witness and be a part of it recently. So yeah.
Alright, thank you, Jocelyn. Hi, everyone. I'm glad to be back, just like Jocelyn. I'm also sorry that I wasn't here, here last month. And to get into the announcements, kind of. On November 1st, Model UN attended their first conference this year at Hilton. As a new delegate myself, I can proudly say that it was such a joy to be a part and join the Hilton Conference. Nathan N. received the Best Delegate Award and now Model UN is headed to prepare for the Cinnamon Conference at Syracuse University. The Big Little Program had its second meeting in the library. Thank you Tess B. and Ms. Harrington for starting this wonderful opportunity for elementary students and high schoolers. Earlier this month, Fall Fest was hosted with treats and games with Mr. Widor's famous pancakes. On, on November 26th, later this month, Madison B. and Addie H. will be participating in the upcoming Eddie Meath Game at the University of Rochester. Last month's Spirit Week goods from the food drive from Spirit Week were also delivered, 70 boxes of food, to be exact, donated by Thomas's student body.
Yeah, most of that's from my class.
We were in second.
No, 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 clean up first.
That was just because you're a senior.
Alright, thank you so much. Now over to Schrader.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And Juliana. I know.
Oh, yeah.
We have a presentation. What the heck?
There we go.
There we go.
We just have pictures. We have pictures. Okay, so at Schrader. So our Schrader Spanish students took a trip to Medina, New York to experience and explore the products, practices and celebrations of Dia de los Muertos. Students enjoyed traditional Mexican food, music, and they also had some hot chocolate and tamales and crafted such as making cavaera masks. Excuse my mispronunciation. I'm really sorry.
We got some people behind you that could probably help you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
See, perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you so much for our chaperones, Ms. Fairbrother, Ms. Hall and Ms. O'Connor, who gave up their Saturday afternoon to help with this trip. Our physics students competed in a pumpkin launching activity to apply their physics knowledge to real-life activities. Their goal was to launch the largest pumpkin the furthest. The most successful launcher went 37.4 meters with others very close behind.
I want to join physics.
That's what I'm saying.
The Schrader Girls Volleyball had their Dig Pink game a few weeks ago to raise awareness and donations to the Breast Cancer Coalition of Rochester. This year, the girls raised $1,450, which was a new record. The varsity captains, Annabelle W., Maddie S. and Juliana F. presented the check to BCCR Representative Helena Scumway. The game also celebrated volleyball program by bringing together rival, modified JV and varsity teams for a great cause.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Our 12-1 students took a trip to the Town Hall to meet with Supervisor Tom Flattery, Town Clerk Diana Marr and Kim Doyle from the Town Supervisor's offices. The students were also able to take a look at a tour of the Town Hall and the Town Boardroom. And to wrap it up, Key Club students volunteered in making dog blankets to donate to a local shelter for the upcoming cold months. And students participated in Drug Free Red Ribbon Week to learn about healthy activities during lunchbox.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Nice job. Thank you so much. It's great to have you guys back and I'm glad you're healthy. Good luck in the show. I know. We'll see you at the show.
You're so good.
You're next.
You're next.
You're up next.
That's our theme.
Yes.
That is our theme. We are in need. Okay. Hello, everyone. Can't believe we're back to November. I felt like I was here yesterday. Alright. They do such a nice job. Our, our elementary schools around the district, they have been busy with doing their own drives as well and for stacking. Not only is stacking happening at the elementary, at the senior buildings, the secondary buildings for some competitions in Spirit Week, but the elementary gym teachers are taking it in and seeing and coordinating some critical thinking skills as people are stacking some donations and making people aware. Band, I received the funniest email to put out there. We all remember back when our kids were like fourth grade and it was their first band. And you go and if it's your first child and their first one, you're just hoping they make it through the entire song. And they go back to band the next day because they're, they're great and they're going to be a rock star. And you're like, yes, honey, of course. Some wonderful, wonderful concerts are going on in the district. And the progress from the first week of these kids being in band to the rehearsals that are going on and the concerts is just staggering. Their happiness and pure joy is seen in their faces. Our libraries continue to be hopping. They have seen such audiences and they have taken on such new roles. They embrace the culture of every month celebrating different cultures. They are inviting people in. Classrooms are inviting people in. It just spills all over the building. It's contagious. It's wonderful. The classrooms are happening in the library. The classrooms are happening outside the library. It's a very cool atmosphere. Our high schools, those deadlines for those college applications came in for students who were on the early admittance. You know it. You could see it in their face when November first came and they were senior and they had checkboxes all in there. Their WTA members were busy writing hundreds of letters of recommendations. And whether we all know, it's to the trade schools, programs that they're stretching for, programs that they never even thought they would apply for, they went for it. So our first deadline is checked down and our WTA members have been behind the kids supporting them. Now they just wait on their email. You're hoping they get it during your class, too. That's, that's fine interruption. Our chair reports, our WTA, our PTSA, even with Weller, it is so involved and integrated in the Emmanuel Lutheran. Something that started off as an idea has now become a staple as well as the coat and concert apparel. We know that we've also had to make adjustments because when you walk in with 100 boxes and there's not storage for 100 boxes, you have to help with that. And it's a good problem to have, but you also want to make sure that you can assist in all the right ways, serving people. Work is being done. Our EDI, they went to Nazareth College. They had a Belonging and Joy Summit. It was Saturday, October 12th, and the purpose of the GSA Unity Summit was to invite young people, their families, LGBTQ, and to experience a sense of belonging through connection. We believe goals, some goal students were there as well and it was a neat, neat experience that they came back and fed. Women's Committee, although our Women's Committee is called Women's Committee, all WTA members are invited to join. They're all welcome to join. They've been serving on committees in the city as well as in the suburbs and going to our regional area. Our WTA delegates have been doing that as well. They just came back from Saratoga. Literally came back from Saratoga and hopped onto our Rep Council meeting. That was pretty cool to see and come back with the news of different things that are going on. And that we're Webster. We do some things that are pretty cool through all our work. Our thank yous. For literally our plates, all of your plates, we're all there. They're full. And they are literally and figuratively full. But when you reach out to people to say thank you, we all know it's a great feeling. You're not going to get a WTA member to forward a thank you that they have received to you guys. I wish they would. It would brighten your day as well. Is that when you're a grandparent? They just go right to the top. So I am going to leave with a few thank yous and excerpts that WTA members have received that you will probably never hear about, but you should know. Dear Mr. Neenan, this grandparent just went right to the top. I don't know how many minutes it took for you, so thank you for sharing. But this WTA member, they wanted to make sure. He was known that he went above and beyond his dedication, that they admired their grandson's love of football and that this member found a way for this student to collect stats and for the other students to be so genuine and appreciative. It was bone chilling.
It was a beautiful letter.
It was. It was a beautiful thank you back, too. I, I had to do some things to get, forward that to me. Other excerpts. Your support for my daughter was an important reminder that the world was not aligned against her and I have been reminding her many times that you were all on her side back then, which she has always acknowledged. Success takes its own path and follows its own timeline. I sincerely want all of you to know who were on her team and my other daughter's team, the same pride in the achievements of my daughters that I do because you were all part of a support system that led to their success many years later. Another one that came. When I picked my son up from learning recovery, he talked to me about a book he just finished. I don't know what kind of witchcraft you're performing. I just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate you and what you are doing. These are from parents to different members that I will not, I promised I would keep anonymous. This is another parents. We are so caught up in our destination that we forget to appreciate the journey, especially the goodness of people we meet along the way. Appreciation is a wonderful thing. We're not going to overlook it as a family. This family did something for the Thomas High School when it was our luncheon. And they found a way and they were like, what can we bring? What can we do? And they brought popsicles for everybody when it was like 98 degrees out.
That's great.
We, we had popsicles first and then from the mouths of babes. This thank you is our elementary school's wonderful writing. But this is what the kids found the most important, the kids who received it from the advisor. And when they delivered it, they all showed which name was theirs. They're like, we did something that took 15 minutes, but they, like, Miss Birdos, I want to go cry. I'm like, yep. Just those things. You should see those. You should hear those. And we wish you Thanksgiving, wonderful Thanksgiving, health, kindness and joy.
Happy Thanksgiving to you too, Joanie. Thank you so much. We're not in campus news. Is that alright?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on to campus news, actually. Mrs. Belsamo and Dr. Benz, if you want to join. I'm going to start as you guys are both joining and I think Mrs. Belsamo, you'll go first here in just a second, but I got a couple that I'm going to read through. Yeah, we played earlier, Paul. I won. Alright, so here we go. First and foremost, I'm going to take off and actually add on to one of the things that, that Joanie was just talking about, our bands. And so as the bands go through from elementary, what she was describing, through middle, et cetera, et cetera, they get to some of our kids that participated in our field band. So exciting. Our marching band won the New York State Field Band Conference Championship on Sunday, October 27th. I think we might know that by now, but here's a couple of other pieces of information that are really cool. They achieved their third title since 1985 and adding to this joyous victory was their score. The performance of their title was a death of a star. It received a 92.1, which is the highest score in the large school Division 2s in more than 20 years. And the reason the 20 years is that's all we could look up. We couldn't get any further beyond that. So that's why we had to kind of say a 20. Prior to that, it was Kingston at 90.35. So again, and if you, anybody that knows anything about it, it's incredible to get and beat somebody by like point one or point two, but then to actually advance that score by a point and a half or more than a point and a half, it's just amazing. So Brittany, or excuse me, our marching band director, Brittany Cole, shared that this milestone is a testament to the countless hours of practice and the unwavering support from our students, staff, families and community. This championship will inspire us to aim even higher, to take on new challenges and to continue to push the boundaries of what we can achieve together. The future is bright. The future is certainly bright for this group as they continue to show their effort, their persistence, their teamwork, et cetera, et cetera. If you've been around the marching band, the atmosphere around our marching band right now is magical. It really is.
Last year, they only lost by two tenths of a point, right? So they were that close last year even.
The whole thing. It's such a great story. So congratulations, kudos to our marching band and everyone and all of our community members that are involved in that. It's a prideful moment, certainly for our community. Alright, next. And everywhere you look, our students are achieving outstanding accomplishments and thriving together. And I'd like to recognize the Webster YEA. As, this is a different, usually we're recognizing them in the fall, right? So, or excuse me, in the springtime, but this is something that they did, which is the first time we did this. But they recently attended the Junior Achievement Entrepreneurial Youth Summit and were contributing, or excuse me, yeah, the contributing members of the first and second place teams. Webster YEA students are taught by Andrew Jasek and Casey Clark. You can see some of our students up there on there as they receive their awards. This is over at the Junior Achievement, which is over at Kodak Center. So if you've ever heard much about that, it's something very new to our area, but it's a national thing. So cool, so cool. If you ever get a chance to, to go to one of those, you'd love it. Next, we, we recently hosted the 24-25 Speech and Debate Tournament where our teams shined. Sam O. earned first place in dramatic performance. Maddie B. received first place in extempore, I can't even say the word here. They did. I'm sure they did. Extemporaneous Speaking. And Ryan B. and Yi Jay received first place in public forum debate. So congratulations to those tournament, or those champions. I know, talented seniors. It's really amazing. And to have four of them do that, again, unheard of. We also recently hosted a special evening to honor and celebrate the veterans and active service personnel and their families in our community as a way of showing our appreciation for their service and sacrifice. This was last Friday night, Thursday night, Thursday night. Oh my God, it was wonderful. I know some of us that were all there and great event, just so much pride. And we want to thank our sponsors, the Spry Middle School Builders Club, the Webster Fairport BPO Elks 2392, or excuse me, 2396, the Spry Middle School Student Council, our Webster Community Chest, Wegmans and Walmart and the Bishop Carney Prep Hockey Players who helped celebrate our veterans and active servicemembers. What a great event. 24 years, next year will be 25. When Spry turns 100, this event turns 25, which will be a cool thing for next year. And then before I turn it over to our special guests that are here with us tonight, I also want to, one more. Congratulations to Webster CSD teachers Melanie Dreary and Peter Duet for being named New York State Master Teachers. Melanie and Pete are among 144 educators representing 83 school districts that were recently added to the statewide network. Melanie has been teaching science for 12 years and Pete has been teaching technology at Schrader for 26 years. Congratulations to both of them. We are so proud of you and thanks for sharing all of your expertise here in Webster to our students. So, and now I'm going to turn things over to both Mrs. Belsamo and Dr. Benz and have them report out on what's going on, what else is going on. Oh, are you guys going to rock, paper, scissors?
No.
You already told us. We follow rules. You tell us we're going first.
You're good, you're good.
Alright, so. So I'm just going to take a moment from elementary campus news to do a public service announcement, not only for our board, but for our community. As many of you know, for pre-K, we do have three current partners, Expressa Beginnings, Kids First and then Liberty Post Stars Preschool that does our half-day. Part of the benefit of having those two child cares is that they provide wrap care. And so we work really hard to make the package beneficial, as we've talked about in previous board meetings. So one of the things that our community is looking for is additional wrap care options. And so in response to that collection of feedback from our community through our current pre-K families and those that choose to decline, the number one reason is for wrap care. So here we go. We have a request for proposals for partners for pre-K. It is currently on not only the business office, but also for our pre-K website. The deadline is November 13th. We held a public meeting in early October where we had several childcare and other businesses' family come and just get some questions answered, talk about the financials and what we're really looking for in our contract. We did receive two official proposals so far, right, Mr. Freeman? So Busy Blossoms, which is a brand-new one on Barrett Road, right across from the post office. I've been there a couple of times. We need to get the dirt filled in and some other things, but they're getting there. And very excited. And they turned in like a 300-page curriculum document. And so they're very, very invested and have put in quite a bit of time. And then Bayview YMCA, which we're very happy to be looking for that partner again, so. So those are the two current ones. We still have a little time. And as always, any questions about pre-K, feel free to email or give a call to me and I'm happy to answer any questions that we have. But we'll be moving forward in that process, doing visitation. There's a pretty comprehensive plan that we have to follow to be able to give feedback and then go into an intent to partner and then followed by a contract that will devise. And this would be for 25-26 school year.
And as far as the Expressa Beginnings, Kids First and Liberty Post, they also are good for next year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we could potentially have five, right?
Correct. Yep. We would have potentially four with wrap care.
Yep, right.
And then again, Liberty Post is a half-day program, which we still have families that really want to have just a part-time to be able to give their, their children some exposure there, so. So it's a quick overview for you. So to begin the year, thinking about our Board About Goal. Number one, to begin the year, we talk about All About Me. So we start with the child and just learning about their emotions through art, through play. Everything we do is exposure through play. I love the little one with, she's showing surprise up on there. So you can see it on her face that she's showing that, but also using a model to be able to add new vocabulary to identify feelings for them. That is also a large part of our program as well.
That's great.
Second unit that we really look at is community helpers. And so especially this year, really having our children who were born during COVID, the height of COVID, really exposing them to many of our community partners. So for example, in the center there, you see one of our wonderful firefighters who came in. He did have the mask on, which can become very scary for kids. And so having that controlled setting in a safe place, he was able to talk them through that if you ever do see me, I may sound strange, but I'm really friendly and I'm here to help you. And so having that exposure during a school day and in a setting that they're very comfortable in. And then you can see on the bottom right there, they're now turning that into a play-based experience. So our goal is to really work on the vocabulary, their communication and start to do some role-playing through, through those experiences. Obviously, our, our officers for Webster Central are constantly involved. So there's our, at Thomas there in the center, Officer Payne. We love their visits. Another piece that we've really worked hard on over the summer with our CKLA at kindergarten through fifth grade, we have aligned a pre-K, our number and, well, letter specifically, but exploration. So you can see one example there with trace it, count how many letters you have there and see if you can find your name in the group of students in your classroom. So finding their name is probably one of the first pieces that we start to expose them to. We're not requesting that they write that and learn all of it yet. It's not looking for mastery. We're just looking for exposure and exploring there. Looking at numbers and in sequence, using large gross motor movement. And you can see Cece demonstrating that as a student leader that day. Looking at charting and graphing and making shapes. Through science, lots of play, disgusting inside of a pumpkin. And so we had a couple of students who really did not like the smell or the order or the touch of that. So that was a, a really neat experience. And many of them turned that into curious wonders, observations. That's our focus for that time. The spider races.
No, I like the focus.
Oh, I know, with the water. Isn't it? I love that picture. Beautiful. The spider races, they had two different circumference of the object that they were using. And so they had to make predictions whether the pencil would be able to wrap quicker in the race or a larger circumference item would be able to. So again, just through experiment and wonder and observation. You can see the still life drawing she's doing of a gourd at the bottom. Just again, in building that vocabulary for them in different themes. A major part of our brain research and our, our time at three and four is really looking at our sensory systems and our integration of that, which is not yet formed. So exposing them to vestibular input where they're upside down or swinging on the playgrounds and finding different ways to do that within the classroom. So crossing the midline, doing some large body movements when we're transitioning from one activity to the next. Another example you'll see in the center there, that's actually corn, like field corn that we feed cows. So we're pretty resourceful in getting free items from our community. So that's, that's wonderful. We're very grateful. And we have some children who would not touch a leaf because of that sensory piece. So seeing them have different types of exposure, and this is in the Thomas Courtyard. Again, another awesome experience for our kids that is not on a playground, but using green space, which is our hope. Growing as artists, you'll see that, beginning stages of a still life and her observing the different parts of a flower and then how she'd like to get started on her drawing. The ability to share materials and begin to take it one phase at a time and build art to the best way that you see it, right, in the eye of the beholder. And then really just getting our fine motor muscles working out so that we are able to get to that pincer grasp when we get into kindergarten. So you can see Jet there is really pinching tissue paper to be able to get it in. to be able to get it in a nice, small, tight ball that he's able to make art out of for his name. Using some STEM-type activities with marshmallows and toothpicks to be able to, again, just that fine motor building their, their fine motor muscles, for sure. Music and movement, a large part of our day. Again, almost every transition has something to do with music and movement. You can see on the upper right-hand corner where we're using the gym space, which is a new piece this year. The high schools previously were a location where we always had gym space. We have a full hour of gym space at both high schools. In the elementary schools, it's a little bit more strategic. So that is built in this year in each one of the elementary schools. So our little friend here was eye-tracking with a beanbag. So again, working on some of that executive functioning and really making sure that our eyes are tracking a beanbag before we catch it, not losing our eye contact. Again, looking at some of those large muscle movements on the swing. And on the left-hand side there, we have rhythm sticks. And so the kids are using some movement and conducting an orchestra without visuals, just listening to it auditorily. And then many of our elementary schools have rock climbing walls. And so that's an area we've been using a little bit more as well. And I just wanted to close with a cute little success. This little guy in the red is a little boy who really had a hard time coming to school. It was very challenging for him to leave the safety net of his home. And so with the love and support of his teachers and team, took us a couple of weeks and lots of effort and patience and smiles, but with friendships and those social interactions that we're able to build, he is like leading our nature hike behind Thomas High School this past week. So I was like, that is a success story, that you might not really understand what went into that child's day. And so we talk about the beauty of a gradual start, and this little friend just needed a longer gradual start to build that safety and love. It's their first exposure, and to be part of One Webster, we need to make sure that we have those types of relationships and trusting for our families, so. And the heart just represents all the incredible buddy partnerships that we do with kindergarten through 12th grade, so, and a special classes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bel Samo, that's great. Always warms us up.
As we transition, I have a, I had a four-year-old nephew who, did the, the police come to his school when he was four? And he liked Officer Gary so much, he called 911 that night to speak to Officer Gary. That's what happened there.
We didn't pre-teach that enough.
You just wanted to say thank you.
That explicit teach needed to be a little bit better.
That's great.
All right, so we have all of our secondary buildings, as you can see. We'll start with GOAL. And October was a busy month, as it was in GOAL also, full of opportunities, experiences, and team building. Making family recipes and studio art, building and launching bottle rockets in science and being rewarded with a game slash team-building activities in math. An autumn fanfare win, the GSA Summit, and an adventure at Stokie Farms. So GOAL just keeps on rocking and moving forward with positive energy and a motivated spirit. And you can see a lot of team bonding and building throughout there. And I also know that they were represented in the marching band success too.
That's right, yep.
So just a lot of success at that secondary level with the special programs too. So they do a lot of different activities, especially team building in the beginning of the school year. All right, and then next one over at Thomas with the Owl program. Owl had some fun to go along with their learning in October. Celebrated Halloween as an Owl family bringing in treats for all staff and students. Owl High was proud to show off their school spirit to Thomas Pepbrally too. Students joined their classes sections and participated in many events with their peers, which is actually kind of like, as you were to share with that story at the end, you know, a success for them as they move forward at the high school level. Owl is also proud to celebrate our athletes and students participating in sports in alternative ways. You can see one of our Owl students, I believe it's right here in the center, celebrated with the Thomas Farsy Football Team after his first year as a team statistician. We're also proud of Mrs. Seabor, our science teacher, and the Assistant Director of Webster CSD Marching Band, and their big win at States. So again, building that bonding and relationships throughout their entire program and sharing it with their school. All right, at Thomas, you've heard already about the Barber Shop Choir. Now this is what they look like, if you wanted to see. And their Do the Right Thing designation, the positive impact to youth of the area, publicly recognized children in grades K through 12. You can see them there. And then these are the results from, the remainder of the homecoming food drive items were easily picked up by the open-door mission, and they'll fill the last truck with boxes of food items, pallets of bottled water, and paper towels. Senior class, three-peated, I wish she was here to hear that.
That's right, that's right.
They are all ducked in their purple there, well done. Congratulations. I'm thinking our junior class at Schrader has the same. They made four-peat with their, with their work today. But it's interesting how just the classes evolve and develop over the years, and they've been fantastic. And then here's our Special Olympics at Empire State Games. Abby and Blessed are competed back in middle October at Brockport College, and they received their medals this week. And you can see not only the joy in their faces, but also their PE teacher. So they did a variety of 40-meter race, club throw, distance kick, precision throw, soft discus. Congratulations to these two great titans and to the teachers who support them in and out of the classroom. Again, more special programs of support here by all of Webster Secondary. Thomas also is doing a Big Little Sister, Big Littles at, with Clem South. The Big Little Program pairs of high school students with students at Clem South who may need mentorship. The group meets monthly before the high school day begins to forge relationships, play some games, and show our youngest titans that titans care. Thank you to Junior Tessa Bartlett and School Counselor Ms. Harrington for leading this new student-led program. Very cool. Willink. We have here, Willink, more Halloween stuff. This month's Willink News Focus on Board Goal Number Two, Climate Culture. Willink students took the lead in the annual We Willink Costume Celebration. Titans handed out candy and ran games with children of Willink staff. Our best buddies and friends of the 12114, 1214 program also celebrated the Halloween season, visiting classrooms and trick-or-treating. Willink also honored three current staff members. This is pretty impressive. Three current staff members who are also United States veterans. Vincent Moynihan, U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel and Teaching Assistant. Jeff Corvo, if I'm saying it right.
Corvo.
Corvo, thank you. Marine Corps, F-18 pilot and Top Gun instructor, pretty cool. Now RTI math teacher, and Genevieve Brennick, U.S. Navy and School Century. So that's pretty cool, but they're veterans there. This week's, I'm sorry, this, I just repeated that one. And then we have Spry, repeated here. Spry has also been buzzing with activities. Sixth graders recently raced through a pumpkin run, and the school hosted an amazing Veterans Day dinner with 120 guests. A special shout-out to Blue House Assistant Principal Jackie Saunders for her leadership in coordinating the longstanding event, as Mr. Neenan shared earlier. The last, and lastly, the Spry faculty spent Super Tennis Conference reviewing file for NWEA and IXL literacy data and shared best practices for Tier One literacy instruction. And then just a few things at Schrader. We did do a mock election. Jeff, AP Government Teacher Jeff Eckler runs a mock election with the AP Government, and they put a tombstone out of Susan B. Anthony and students in the courtyard, and they put their stickers out there if they voted. This is the mock election crew. It's a pretty well-done system, as Jeff has done for four different elections, and he proudly boasts that he's, they are four-for-four predicting the winner here at Schrader. In the middle, you'll see our National Merit Semifinalists, Lance and Brayden. Congratulations to them. You heard about our Red Ribbon Week, got to say that slowly. Up here in the corner, in our transportation class by Scott Lasky, he every year takes all the students to the Wayne Airport, and they go fly a plane, which is pretty cool. It's a tricky field trip for a number of ways, but one of them is good weather. So he has nice weather, he has some great aerial views, and he promises me he's going to take me up in spring, so we'll see.
Have you ever been?
No, I'm, have you?
It's actually really cool.
Is it?
Yeah.
So I'm concerned that he's taking me alone, though.
Pick the right student. Okay, you'll be all right. I was going to say, pick the right student.
Right there, you'll be good to go. We had, as you heard earlier, the Great Physics Pumpkin Launch. That's actually so cool. See kids bringing in their decorated pumpkins. We don't need to make shirts or anything to say beat Thomas, we just beat Thomas, 41-7. So, and then you heard about the marching band state champs. We're very proud of that with Brittany as our leader at our musical department. And then this is what our staff at Schrader is doing this year for staff meetings. We're calling them learning teams, learning teams, and the choices through professional development. They, through a survey, we found that they wanted more PD and, well, the Departmental Staff Meetings. And so we said, okay, what do you want to learn about? And so they all selected different areas, and we have lead teachers, some administrators helping out with these topics, basically. The Anxious Generation Book Study, SCL Strategies, Science of Reading, which I joined in just to see, and that's remarkable, all the information out there on that. Artificial Intelligence, talk about information, oh my goodness. And then Meeting of the Minds, that's sharing of best practices. And it's had some really, they're now, you know, they're collaborating, they're communicating, they're talking with one another, and sharing best practices. And it's really cool having sat in that one to say, you do this. Because they're across, they're cross-content, they're phys ed, they're business, they're earth science, and they're sharing their work. And then Freshman Flex is something that we're, we are working on this year. It's a team, it's kind of like a middle-school approach, but teaming for students who may need some extra supports, whatever it might be, in terms of executive functioning, organizational skills, just a little extra support. And we have a team of teachers that work with them. And we didn't, it's no extra staffing, we just kind of, we're able to attribute about 15 or so students to certain teachers and make it work. So they have their own little, it's kind of like a planning slash what are we doing now thing. And that should wrap it up, yes.
All right, thank you both very, very much for that great report, but also thank you both for your leadership. Greatly appreciated, and happy Thanksgiving to you guys.
You too.
Thanks. All right, now I think that we're ready to move on to our next part, right? Okay. So we, yeah, come on up, world language, friends. I'm going to turn things over if you guys are good. We've got no many questions. I'm going to turn things over to Aaron to introduce our, our next speakers, yeah. What do we call it? Our instructional report. Thank you.
Well, they're getting set up. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Terry McCarthy, who is the Director of Several Departments, that includes World Languages. So talk about a diverse and varied department, which is really exciting and amazing for the students who go to school here in Webster. So I'm excited to hear what they're ready to share, and I hope I can understand it all. Turn it over to you, Dr. McCarthy.
Turn it over to Madame Lily.
Oui. Alors, je vais commencer avec une petite histoire en français. Et alors, écoutez bien, et voilà, on va commencer. Le titre s'appelle Marie et Mador à Paris, Marie est artiste. Alors, Marie est artiste. Elle a un chien. Elle a un animal. Le chien s'appelle Mador. Mador est un petit chien. Mador n'est pas un grand chien. Marie et Mador habitent en France. Ils habitent à Paris. Paris est la capitale de la France. Paris est une grande ville. Paris n'est pas une village. C'est pas une petite village, c'est pas une petite ville. Marie et Mador habitent dans un petit appartement à Paris. Marie et Mador habitent dans un petit appartement à Montmartre. Marie et Mador habitent sur la Place du Tête. Marie adore les girafes. Marie veut une giraffe. Elle veut une grande giraffe. Mais il y a un problème. C'est pas possible d'avoir une giraffe à Paris. Oh, no. Il y a un problème. C'est pas possible d'avoir une giraffe dans un petit appartement à Montmartre sur la Place du Tête. Alors, Marie a une bonne idée. Marie décide à peindre Mador en girafe. Marie est artiste. Maintenant, Marie est contente. Marie a une girafe. Et voilà, c'est la fin.
Oh, my goodness.
So was there anything that you understood from the story? Un petit peu.
Paris is a city.
Paris, good, yes, city, yeah. Any animals that you? The dog, she, uh-huh, the dog's small, yep. And she, yeah.
You can't have a giraffe in a city.
Not in a small apartment, right?
That's right, small apartment, that's a problem. One problem.
Mm-hmm. La Place du Tête, uh-huh.
Le sud est le sud, right?
Um, mm-hmm.
I'm just, I'm not going to keep.
Yeah.
No, you're good.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Good.
So how much did we get out of that? A little bit? We got a little bit.
Yeah, not bad.
All right. Well, merci. And we'll come back to Madame Lily in a little bit. And there is a method to why we started this way, and it will connect to the, really what the purpose of this instructional report is about. And I wanted to start with this from the Blue Ribbon Commission on graduate, graduation measures. And think about this in the context of language learning. And oftentimes, I will get the question, and I know language teachers sometimes get this question, maybe from students or parents or from the community. Why do we need to learn a language in the age of AI and Google Translate? And I just have my phone, and I can just listen, and it'll pick it up. I look at that. That's what you learn in language class. That's what you can't get through AI and through Google Translate. And I'm so proud of the 28 teachers that we have in Webster and the 3,000 students who travel in and out of language classes every day, and the work that they put in to be, and they will be, part of that portrait of graduate in Webster. And really the small investment that we in Webster put in, and the payoff that it has for, not only for our students, but for our country. I just want to put it into context. And I won't read, you do have the slides, but we do have a robust language program in Webster, and certainly on par with other districts. And I would say maybe larger and more robust than many others our size in terms of what we offer, and particularly relative to what other students have to, have to take. They have lots of options, and they stay in our programs, and we do everything we can. And I'm really proud of our teachers for what they do, and of course, proud of our students for what they accomplish. And we'll talk about that. And it's very important that we keep them, that they stay in, because here's what we find. A recent survey said that one in three employers in the United States have lost business because they don't have multilingual speakers. You think about what that does to our GDP. Think about what that would do to our economy if we had multilingual speakers. And so I'm just, I really want to make sure we talk about what language does, and a small investment in language learning can do for every profession, from the health sciences to the STEM, to construction, to auto shop, to, to food services and the hospitalities, every profession. And going back to the portrait of a graduate, one of the things with the graduation measures that the state has been talking about as we move away from the Regents exams as an exit outcome, is moving toward the SEALs as a, as a potential opportunity. And Webster is well positioned. As you can see, we have eighty, on average, eighty or some odd students every year who don't have to get this extra designation. Who go above and beyond to show their proficiency in language. And, and we're proud to say that, that we'll have lots of students who will be prepared when the Regents exams go away. To, to really demonstrate that they will, they will have already met the portrait of a graduate, particularly through the SEAL of By Literacy. And so then as we think about, how will we, how can we in New York State and in Webster help meet that need? And, and move towards that portrait of a graduate? We do have new standards. And I, I brought in this, we have, our, our middle, middle level world language teachers have used some of these cartoon characters. And you may be familiar and there's some, some blasts from the past, if you're, you may be familiar with some of these. If you're, if you have children of a certain age or you are of a certain age. And, and so the standards are, are in a, they're in five areas. And, and I will, again, I won't go into depth on them. We'll talk about three of them as we move on. But the, the important part is, is emphasizing a natural way of learning language. And, and replicating what we try to do in, in, in regular, in real life. So you experience that. And this is what Lisa, what Madame Lily did in her class. And, and I've, I've actually observed or will observe each of them this year. And they have done or will do something very similar in their middle level classes. Oh my goodness. And so really this is about the pathway to proficiency. And it's about growth. And it's about helping our students recognize that it's not about perfection. It's about recog, it's about growth along a continuum. And our checkpoint A is, is really recognizing, you know, you're not going to get it all right. But, but does a, does a, someone who's, who's fluent in a language, can they understand you a little bit? Can you put some things together in a, in an understandable way? And we see where Elmo is, right? And you, you can understand, like, you can hear Elmo's voice in your head. That's, that's somebody who's a novice high, say in Spanish, right? Compared to if you're familiar with Word Girl. So I have an eight, I have a nineteen-year-old daughter. And, and if you have, you might be familiar with Word Girl, right? That's somebody who's, who's, who's pretty proficient in, in a language, right? And, and we're, we have students who are going to be not only proficient, but who will probably be fluent in a high school, in a language, which is amazing. Now for today, we are going to focus on our middle level in terms of, of what our standards are. In terms of timeline for these new standards, we started last year with our seventh grade. So level one in Webster is spread out over two years between seventh and eighth grade. And actually the new exam is going to be introduced in June. And all three of these amazing educators were in Spencerport today helping to craft that exam. So we're very proud of that. And then each year, the, the curriculum is, or the standards are moving up a grade level. And so to the point of by twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, we will have implemented all of the, of the standards and all the grade levels. Again, as in Webster, we are very well positioned. As you see the checkpoint C, which is that exit, we're already there with the SEAL of By Literacy. Also, we're very well positioned in that ten years ago, one of the chief architects of the standards, Bill Heller, who was a Genesee O professor. He came to Webster and worked with our teachers to help design curriculum and professional learning. So this is a lot of the things that we've been doing in our instructional program, in our classrooms, are things that are already, are in those, in these new standards. So this is not going to be a huge leap and change in our program. And so now I really want to turn it over to the practitioners. And they're going to take you through just some examples of what these standards look like in the classroom.
All right, so I, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cowan? Oh, okay.
There you go. So I started this evening by sharing with you a story, a very short story that was illustrated, that had a lot of repetition. Had a lot of cognates in it. And so that's really what we love to focus in on as students are beginning in middle school. And they're getting a lot of input from us as, and when they come into our classrooms each and every day. And after, you know, it's just a natural way of learning, similar to as, you know, when they were young children, learning their first language. Just getting all this input, 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 that's exactly what we're reflecting in our classrooms. So they're moving, you know, they're getting things through short texts, authentic resources such as infographics. Being able to extract that information through reading and also some short audio recordings as well. Music is also a important part of what we do. Again, another authentic resource that students really enjoy appreciating the music from the countries in which they are learning their language. And some extension activities after, we've done a lot of this input, some of the things that they can do with either a text or by listening. They can find text-based evidence and they can also recall like the sequence of events in a text. They can find the best answer to comprehension questions. It's really amazing to see what they can do with their understanding of literature, so.
Standard two is interpersonal communication. And so the standard itself states that learners should be able to interact and negotiate meaning in spontaneous spoken or written communication. To exchange information, to express their feelings, their preferences and opinions, which is perfect for middle school. Because if you know middle schoolers or have a middle schooler, you know that A, they love to talk and B, they love to talk about themselves. So we really hone in on that and it's fun because it kind of takes that filter off from them because they're talking about themselves. So of course they want to talk. So that might look like things like exchanging directions to pictures or situations. They might compare rank ordered lists with a partner, like my list is this, what's your list, mine's better, this is better because. Or responding to short answer questions. One of the things that we use a lot in our classes are what we call chat mats. And so that allows them to have, it's like a springboard to allow them to communicate in the language. So you see an example here where students can talk about the weekend. And really the goal here is just getting them to use the language to talk about themselves. It doesn't have to be perfect, it's really just getting them to take that filter off, to be comfortable using the language. You'll see on the right-hand side, there's ways to expand their ideas. So as they get more comfortable, they can start adding more detail to their sentences, which really gets them moving from that novice low to novice mid-level. And again, the focus is on comprehensible communication, it's not on perfection. So we're not looking at grading them on grammar, or did you use this right or say this right? It's really can you be understood by somebody who's accustomed to working with language learners? And my favorite thing is on the next slide, you'll see feedback is occurring instantly. So there's a familiar face up there from Mr. Freeman. But kids are using the chat mats here to discuss their preferences for food. The kiddo on the right-hand side couldn't stop saying the phrase, que rico, que rico. Because his partner was describing such yummy food. And so he's instantly reacting to his partner in real time, which is awesome, because the kids get the feedback as they go. And it's even better because they're negotiating meaning right, again, in real time. If a partner doesn't understand them, they can ask them a question, they can clarify themselves. So it's really just taking that filter off, again, not focusing on perfection, but using the language in a meaningful way. And one of my favorite parts that we've switched to with the new standards is being able to use the language to talk about culture. Rather than just talking about culture in English, we now use the target language to talk about culture, which I know you're going to touch on, so.
All right, so for culture, as she mentioned. And I really love that too Samantha, when you mentioned about now they get to see the culture also in the content language. One of the ones I did recently was the bullfighting. It was very simple, it started out with seventh grade, but it's amazing how it goes from, I show clips of the Book of Life. But the thing about that movie not only has the Day of the Dead, but it also has bullfighting. And if you notice in the picture, there's la tortura. And basically we have a more analytical way of, of that sport and the culture versus, you know, the, the culture versus really what's inhumane. So if, I don't know if it's on the next slide, the way I presented it, I talked about the story itself, where I use a lot of adjectives. If you notice, reminds me a little bit about what Lisa was doing earlier, where I use a lot of the adjectives, I'm introducing verbs. So I talked about one hundred percent the, the actors of the movie, the characters in, in the, in the content language. And then if you notice in your left, in the left side, I talk about the practice of bullfighting. And of course I use pictures, very similar to what my colleague Lisa did earlier with the story of, that she introduced this segment with. Eventually, before the end of the semester in January, kids will get more and more reading and more exposure into the practices of not only the bullfighting, but also en sierra de todos, which is practice in Spain. So I also love that aspect, that it's not just something we do in English, but now they get to experience it in the Spanish language. It's a little bit of a challenge right now for production. Right now we're focusing on basically having that exposure. But I will say though Webster has always been ahead of the game when it comes to culture. When I started at Will Inc. twenty-three years ago, we used to have the exploratory program. And there was an eight-week segment of just culture, which now has evolved into what the sixth grade kids have is war cultures. And I'm even more proud to say that I personally teach an adaptation of war cultures to our twelve-one program. And it's been amazing. So even though the sixth grade is not necessarily aligned with the three languages, it is still helps when, when they get into seventh and eighth grade. Oh, there he is. Yes, so basically, so everybody is an equitable experience because they get to also experience that. That is my boy Sebastian. He calls my class Mrs. Brownsworld. But I'll take it. We were talking, the, two different days. One day we were talking about China and animals in China and buildings in China. And on the other one, on your left side, we're doing numbers in different languages. Of course, my specialty is Spanish, so I kind of took advantage and did a little math with him in, in different languages, so that was really fun.
All right, well, well, thank you so much for the opportunity just to share just a, a little touch around what we do, I should say what they do and what our students do every day in Webster in terms of being language learners. And I'll just leave you with this quote and thank you for your time. And I'll turn it over to all you for any questions you might have.
I have a quick question. We do in Webster, French, German, Spanish and then Latin. Is there any future expansion of the languages? Any ideas for that?
There, there's certainly, it, it's, it's a tough road. I, I think it's, it's, I, I think there, yeah, I.
Are you thinking like other, like ASL or something like that, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
In the past we have, but.
Yes.
And we don't do that, just to clarify. No, we do French, German and Spanish.
Yeah, we, we, we offer Latin as an elective.
We're limited right now to these languages and Latin in, for one semester or one year.
Yeah.
Is there a plan to expand that for more options for students? Or is there a way that students take online courses, Chinese or whatever, whatever language they?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're, we're looking at is not necessarily for graduation credit, but an opportunity to partner with local, local school, like local community schools to at least put something on like a, almost like a, an applied music, where we, where we offer like a half credit. Where they might be able to get some, some opportunities where they'll get some credit for their study of language outside of school. So we're looking at that. I think one of the things that, that we are also being able, looking at exploring is, is could we bring in other languages? Obviously there are staffing implications of that. ASL we did, we did offer for a long time. We didn't, it, what we ran into was student interest. We, we lost, there wasn't a lot of student interest and also teachers. We, we, we are hard enough time fi, we have a hard enough time finding, we've been, we've been lucky. We've had amazing teachers that we brought into our district. But we, we're, we, we couldn't find an ASL teacher, even when we had students who were interested. So that's.
One way to look at it too is the SEAL of By Literacy, obviously, right? We had, I got one of the slides there, we can't pull it up now, but we're up to fourteen, fourteen languages last year, which is amazing. So that's one way that we do bring in other languages. But it's, maybe you want to just explain really, really quickly the SEAL of By Literacy and how they.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the SEAL of By Literacy, it, it requires students to demonstrate proficiency both in English and in a second language. And so students have, have to meet a certain number of, of benchmark points that they can gain in English through both Regents exams. It could be AP, it could be a project. And then similarly in a, in a second world language. And predominantly, most of our students do it through their classwork. But we have a number of students who have gotten it in Ukrainian, in Chinese, in Urdu. Trying to think what else we've had, Korean, we've had Telugu. There's a number of others I can't think of off the top of my head.
Often their home language.
Yeah, home language or, or heritage language, Greek we've had. We've had a number of students, growing number of students who are English language learners, who have come to us from, from other countries. Which is exciting because that's also an area that we want to expand and really recognize and support. Which isn't part of this presentation, but it also, it is, they're language learners as well. So, so they're, so they're part of, they're part of our family too.
That's great to know.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. Thank you for making learning a, a foreign language much more fun. When we were in school, it was learn your verbs and you know how to conjugate them. And, and it was terrifying, but to learn culture with it, it makes it more real for children. So thank you for taking the time to engage all the students and give them that, that piece of a different culture, so, thank you.
Yeah, agreed. My daughter's a junior and she's considering the SEAL next year, which shocks me just because it, same thing with me. It was, yeah, different, a little painful, but she loves it and so she's considering the SEAL, which is pretty cool.
Makes a difference.
Very cool, I've had a chance to sit in on some of those, what they have to challenge into, it's super rigorous and it's great, wonderful.
And I'd love to see the clap, you know, if we could get to the clap, that's a lot of credits towards college that, yeah. Nine, you said?
Nine, yeah. It was twelve, they dropped it to nine, for ninety-five dollars.
Yes, I took advantage of college.
That's amazing.
Yeah, we're an official testing center.
That's huge, that's nice.
I believe the word is suerte?
Buena suerte.
Lucky? No.
Good luck.
Oh, good luck, okay. So how will we say, we are very lucky?
Tenemos suerte.
Tenemos suerte, and in French? Those, that, right there. What I'm trying to say is that we are so lucky to have you all in front of our kids. And we do appreciate, again, I'm so glad we actually highlighted middle, because this is where it really gets started for our students and our learners in sixth grade, like you said, Maribel, and also through seventh and eighth. One of the things that we recognize in Webster is for our kids to be successful and graduate, they really do need to be successful in a language. And it starts in that middle school. And we have plenty of data that supports. And we have plenty of data that supports that when they're successful in the middle level, that they're going to be super successful all the way through. So kudos to all of you and your colleagues that you're representing. And we really appreciate you doing this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Benz, would you like to come back and speak at Iowa?
Again? Muchas gracias.
With that, can I have a motion to approve the instruction report as presented? So move Carol, second, Maria, all in favor? Aye. All right. On to Mr. Freeman.
All right, now, first thing is the Treasurers Report for August. Not a lot going on in August, just to point out, there was one technical change because our audit is, was done. So we went back and redid the reserves to match what the audit is to end the year, since that was completed. So I just want to point that out. If you compare July to August, why did it change? That's the reason why we went back and updated that.
Question.
We're all just trying to pull our computers back up.
I know, we got booted out, but.
I know.
It was, it was.
Had to make a note.
Brian did it.
Which Brian? I know. The one that's not here.
Exactly. Are we going to motion? Anyone want to see it?
That's okay, I looked at it.
Looked at it before, yeah. Full disclosure, this isn't the first time we've seen it, so yes, okay, perfect. All right, with that, can I have a motion to approve the August twenty twenty-four Treasurers Report as presented? So move Linda, second.
I second.
Deaf? All in favor? Aye.
Next up is the Fun Audit. So Audit Committee met a few weeks ago now and reviewed it with Tom Zuber and went over it and did an executive summary. So I'm happy to announce this year, we had one finding, which was more of an FYI as part of the audit, because more districts are using the piggybacking language for when we go to buy stuff, as far as bidding, piggybacking off of other districts, other national cooperatives. So they recommended just coming up with a more solid process for that, for when we go buy things that are on, say, you know, Pennsylvania state contract and doing some checkmarks in that they are, those states that we're purchasing from or other cooperatives are following New York State rules. So that's the only finding. Everything else was cleared up. Financials were pretty solid as well, heading into twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, isn't that something you already do?
So there's a lot of purchasing, what we call purchasing cooperatives, like the group of municipalities will join together. So recent, you could say, like, all the municipalities in the state of Texas have joined and created the Lone Star Municipal Corporate Purchasing. And they'll send out a bid, and companies respond to that bid. And other municipalities could say, I want that price that that cooperative already did. So we're, a lot of districts and other municipalities are tagging on to things like that because it saves you a lot of time and effort when you have to bid it yourself. So if it's not available in New York State or off of a BOSI's bid list or doing it internally, it's just easier to say, oh, we'll do that. But what they're saying is, is like, make sure that group has done this, this, and this before you could go use that, utilize that bid.
So you go beyond New York State, you also go across the country?
Yeah, one of the most popular ones is called the Keystone Purchasing Network. We utilize them for a lot of heavy equipment and a lot of like facilities-type stuff. So they're just saying, make sure it follows New York State general municipal law.
You have a question?
Keystone out of Pennsylvania?
Yes.
All right, with that, a motion to approve the audit approval and corrective action approval. So move Carol, second. Linda, all in favor? Aye. All right, board member highlights. I'll let anyone else, does anyone have anything jumping out that they want to share? Because Linda, Carol, and I have some slides that Linda put together for us. She shared it with everyone, we'll put it in Board Docs afterward. But we just want to touch on the NISBA convention. No. Are they good? We got yours right there. I know, we got booted out, so I have to find it again, but. Three days, where's that first slide?
Three full days, a hundred and ten different presentations, a hundred and sixty-seven exhibitors, six hundred and seventy-eight school districts were represented, twenty miles of walking, according to Aaron. We had a lot of hand sanitizer, pause up. But countless learning experiences and endless memories. I think this by far was probably my favorite convention that we've been to. I think we learned so much. And most of what we went to, went to hear about were things that are on our Strategic Planning Committee, right? So it was AI, electric buses, cell phones. So I, I think, yeah, attendance as well. I think it was an incredible, an incredible experience this year. Probably one of the best conferences with the variety that we got to see, so.
We're all in stage work, as you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're all thinking in the same wavelength, so no, it was great. I think the scariest thing was meeting Sophia.
Our keynote.
Keynote was a robot.
She was a robot.
Yeah, it was Sophia from Hong Kong.
It was unsettling.
It was.
That's a good way to describe it.
And I came into it with an open mind.
Yeah, it was.
And I was like, ooh, creepy.
We didn't stand in line for over an hour to take a selfie with her. We skipped that.
Yeah, we did.
We listened to her, very interesting conversation and dialogue. Representative from NISBA would ask her questions, and she would respond.
He was really struggling to look, look at her, look her in the eye. She kept staring at him.
Yeah. And she makes facial expressions and bats her eyes and tilts her hat. I mean, like a normal human being.
I mean, she's on the web. Full disclosure, I actually used her as an example in my classroom last week. And she spent on Jimmy Kim, or no, sorry, Jimmy Fallon twice. So we kind of watched that clip because the first clip, she wasn't as detailed and high-tech as she even is now. So just in two years, the growth and improvements that they made with her was pretty cool, so. But a lot, a lot of AI.
She was winking at us.
She did, we.
I thought I saw sarcasm.
Then there was.
It's a dad joke.
She did a dad joke, right?
Like, really?
But yeah, it was, it's all this stuff in our strategic planning, so a little bit of electric buses, yeah.
Been foundation aid, we sit in on that in the budgeting process, so. I think it was.
I think it made AI less scary, some of the presentations. I.
That's a good point.
I felt like, oh, we, first of all, we better get on the program. And secondly, we have to, we have to, and we shouldn't be afraid because there are so many really good uses for it.
That's very true. That's true.
Yeah, that one speaker, Dan Fitzpatrick, I took a quote that he had said, and it says that it's important to empower educators and learners to embrace AI's potential. But it's also, it is paramount that we prepare our students not just to adapt, but to thrive and innovate. So it did, it made it feel less, less frightening, so. Looking forward to bringing some of it back to Webster and seeing it all come to fruition, so. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to do this. Yeah, it was great, it was great.
If we don't, if we don't make sure kids are with it, they're going to be left behind. As an adult, I can tell you in my work, I'm feeling overwhelmed because I'm not with it yet. And I'm feeling like a lost opportunity to build efficiency because I'm not with it. So I am leaning heavily on students, and we want those students to be our students that we can, that employers can lean on to, to make that happen, so.
Totally true.
I remember when we started really using computers in the classroom. And I had Jeff Keisum's schedule. He was a student who was really good with computers. And they said, should we get Jeff? I'd be like, yeah. Honestly, because it takes a while, as teachers, I am concerned that we find a way for teachers to get there. That's important.
I think for kids, it's important for kids to know when to use it, when not to use it, and when, when they can. I think that's the part of conversations that I know we're having on our Strategic Planning Subcommittee. But, I mean, it, school's built around rules a lot of times, right? And so kids don't, there's a lot of kids that don't want to break the rules and don't know the rules, and they need some guidance on that. So yes, we want you to use AI on this, this assignment. No, we don't want you to use it on this assignment. And they'll follow that, but that's, that's the work that we've got to do, is to determine when it's appropriate to use it, how to use it. And then that's how they learn, and that's how they go into society, not being afraid of it. So it's a really good conversations around.
And as an English teacher, it shows you how they can show you how they use AI. It's not like it's, no, you know. Yeah, I'm pretty impressed with what we can do.
I'm excited, I'm going to a conference here coming up. It's with the FBI, superintendents in the area are all meeting with the FBI. It was a year ago that I went to the same, whatever it was, a forum, forum of sorts. And they said then that the number one new growing, or the fastest-growing position in the FBI was a prompt engineer.
Prompt engineer.
Right? And I'm super curious to know where that stands a year later because that's something that obviously all of us have learned more and more about since then, so.
Stay tuned.
Very cool.
That's good.
That's good.
All right, that brings us to Consent Agenda. Are there any questions about the Consent Agenda? All right, with that, can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? So move Jeff, second, Maria, all in favor? Aye. We don't have anybody else in the audience, so I don't believe we have any speakers. So that brings us to adjournment. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Carol, so move, second, Maria, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, have a good night.